Alderman Persick?
Here.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Here.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Here.
Alderman Evans?
Here.
Alderman Kerwin?
Here.
Alderman Larry Hall? Alderman Tudor?
Here.
Alderman Stuter?
Here.
All present, you have a quorum.
Yep, so the, uh... Mr. Mayor.
Oh, he's not. I apologize.
I declare the regular meeting of, uh... Never mind, go ahead. He's not, huh? Sorry. Alright, council before you have approval of the minutes for you.
Mr. Mayor, I approve... I move to approve that January 20, 2015 has written and have them placed on file.
I'll lodge my Alderman Kerwin, we have a second. Second by Alderman Evans. Any special? Call both please.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter? Seven yes, one absent, motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, next time on Janus Mayor's Report, not a whole lot to judge, but I just want to bring everybody's attention, um, I think I mean, mentioned in the paper a couple of weeks ago, the high-speed rail, um, it's inevitable coming into the city and it's too late, too tracks, and everything else. We actually had the opportunity to... We had a meeting with them a week ago, last week, sometime like last week. One of the challenges to face, though, I keep having a brush with, is Kankakee Street and the way the curb is, they're having some definite challenges with that. They did meet with us, like, the fire department and stuff like that. There's... This is all just preliminary talk, but I want to make sure everybody's aware of what's going on. Because of the challenges they have faced, they've actually even thrown a proposal of closing Kankakee Street and digging out underneath the rails on Water Street. It was a preliminary proposal, didn't bring too much into it, but we were putting our status and stuff together, but I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that that's out there. They did present that to us. Yeah, go ahead, but, uh, we've... I know staff has got some marching orders as far as we're trying to do traffic studies and stuff like that, and impacts and everything else that we've got to put together. You know, early on, they threw the proposal out of that Kankakee, uh, street project with the ramp and everything else, looked like it would take out three businesses, three or four businesses. So, you know, it should have definitely an impact on our community as far as, you know, just not only loss of business, but loss of revenue and stuff like that. But, uh, yeah, just preliminary stuff, and we'll work on our stuff as we find out more, because we told them they kind of looked at other options as well. We'll make sure everybody stays abreast on the situation, but I want to make sure everybody's aware of that. You know, we dealt with the uncertainties of the Eliana, we don't know what's going on with that, but we still have that high-speed rail working in the background, it's just kind of been quiet the whole time. But it sounds like their plan is to go with two rails, um, I think past Whitehead, actually going back to two tracks, and they're looking to bring it from there all the way up to Joliet beginning of 2017. They are moving forward with, I expect this spring, with dwellers in the Kankakee River as far as we're doing that bridge going over the Kankakee, you know, that project will start. Regardless of one or two tracks, they... The bridge is older, they're going to be replacing it, so, you'll see activity going on out there, so, I just want to let everybody know what's going on in that way, in that regards, and, uh, as we get more stuff going on, I'll make sure you guys are aware of it.
That would be a nightmare to sort of all the Kankakee Street traffic, if we funnel through downtown and then try to curve back and tie in Kankakee Street, go somewhere else and take out other people's businesses on the way, I take it, that's your point?
Yes, it's, um... Wasn't pretty, but, uh, you know, we have, you know, it's... They know, but we... There's challenges, there's challenges when you do these types of instances, we just, you know, we just can't say it won't work. We have to demonstrate, so staff will be spending hours on those demonstrations, so just want to make sure everybody's aware of that, too. I've been kind of running out of hours in the day sometimes for these guys, but there's stuff, you know, with traffic patterns, traffic counts, stuff like that, that we'll have to, uh, go out and get, at our expense, at our time, so, I always want to make sure everybody knows it doesn't become a problem, so...
And one of the positions we didn't state though is, we didn't notify them, we didn't put the Kankakee River Drive, you know, exploring that closing, totally handled, we're not going to do anything until we know more information, because we can't have more closings.
It just seems to keep... Whether it's the rail, it just keeps seeming to slash our city.
Well, it's, it's...
Yeah, they're collapsing.
You know, I'm straight up, I wasn't not in favor of what their plan is, absolutely not. We all know how our city works, we all know the nature of Kankakee Street and the amount of traffic that's used, it's made thoroughfare really for our local traffic, but sometimes we have to present more than that, and that's where our challenge is. We just can't say, "Well, it won't work, we know our town, these guys don't know our town," but we have to... We have to put more in play, we have to look at the option, as they're looking at it, we have to present, um, why it won't work, more than just saying that it's just not going to work, we have to present challenges that's going to be faced to not only continue with our flow of traffic, but to continue making, you know, not basically destroy the viability of downtown, but, you know, it very, very will be challenged, exactly, public safety is all this thing, and costs associated with it, so, um, it's... There's a lot, and Culp is very good, and all of his guys do, Culp as well, so, um, but, you know, just the... Not... Once we hear it, you know, and we absorb it, you know, and then everything else is... With that, you know, presented, it's still very preliminary, you know, tomorrow, IDOT and UP or whoever's in charge of this thing could change it, you know, we don't know that.
Is it great separation even on the, uh... Are they even considering a great separation there for the bridge?
Yeah.
They've already shown us something.
Do they want to go over Kankakee Street?
We thought we asked that, and as Grace said, it's not feasible.
It's not feasible.
But it's not feasible. It's not feasible to us.
It's too expensive, in other words, for them, right?
Well, there's alternatives, there are...
Right.
They're slowing the train down, so they don't hit their maximum speed, then they've got to slow the train down, so you've got to run that model, now they have clear direction that, you know, we're not looking to close Kankakee Street, and we never have been, we've always been there, so...
And I'm not really defending them, but they have to look at every option, this is, you know, well, because that's what they're doing. Because when they came to us, you know, last year we mentioned, they came to us with preliminary, preliminary improvements to the crossings that we have within our jurisdiction, within the city, and, um, as you go up, you look at Coal City Road, and you look at Strick Mine Road, you look at First Street, everything kind of played out, you know, improvements along those that kind of really kind of helped how traffic moves along for us, but once they hit Kankakee Street, it was like, there's no way, you know, and they're aware of it, but they're at the same time, they know that it's a challenging intersection, so they... Did they look at, you know, the great separation, I'm sure they did, did they look at, you know, other options? Yes, they have, and they've also looked at closing, and I think that's what they wanted to do, they wanted to say, as we're looking at all these options, one of them is closing, how do you guys feel about that? Well, you know, I was as nice as possible to say no, but it's more than just saying we have to expend it.
But see, and I'm going to throw this off for once, if we... And I understand exactly what you're saying there, that we can't just say it doesn't work, we have to give them proof as to why we don't believe it will work, and I would think that at the same token, they would have to do the same and just say, "Well, it's not feasible," and prove to us why it's not feasible, that you go above and let us stay the same.
They, yeah, they've pretty much demonstrated that to us.
They have enough staff to be able to...
Yeah, they got, it's... And, you know, and I'm sorry to get you guys offside, but it's something that, you know, needs...
I just feel like our city's getting slashed.
It is, well, um...
Not yet. We don't.
I don't think we are, I think, but...
Well, between Eliana and this, we absolutely don't.
As these things are, as these things happen, um, you know, we have to make our scans, but we also have to prepare, and we also have to do our due diligence, and, you know, what I'm really trying to express more than anything is to let you guys know that they're looking at these crossings, but also to let you guys know that staff's going to be expending, you know, significant hours on demonstrating what the challenges will be faced with this, you know, option, whatever number they got, being presented, so, I think I was more, you know, trying to convey is that's what we're doing, but at the same time, you know, if you guys come walking in and you see, you know, all this railroad stuff, hey, what's going on, you guys have to understand.
Thank you.
When you put your stuff, the staff puts something together, is there a timeframe, or are you just presenting as you work it out, you know, whatever you want to present to them, or do they have monthly meetings you go to or something?
Right now, what we would do is we're going to respond back to what they brought to the day, and we're... We tell them it's going to take us, you know, some time to do that, so, at least thirty days. Okay, that's what I was wondering. And then they're looking at the other options that we brought up in the brainstorm meeting, too, to not close Kankakee Street, you know, show us why, what are your obstacles, we'll show you what our obstacles are, so we're working on, you know, that checklist and identifying. Okay, thank you. We'll keep you guys informed, and whatever you're doing, I'm back here.
I think that's the biggest promise, is to let everybody know what's going on.
Yeah.
And go for theirs.
And this second rail will be a freight rail, I take it?
Um, so, I, you know, I specifically addressed the UP representative, and as they put it, they don't anticipate any increase in freight traffic.
They need to play an official record statement.
And they said that's freight fees.
Oh, absolutely, they're very, they're very good.
They're very good.
And, you know, it, um...
It'll go right to their new UP, uh, FDR up in Joliet, they won't hit no more freight.
It's... The big thing is, when it comes to that line, is what the feasibility is for UP along that line, it's been all Southern Pacific line, I think it goes down to San Antonio, it doesn't really hit any big major ports, that line doesn't, but I'm sure there's crossovers along the way exactly where, I don't know, but, yeah.
More waterfall.
Okay.
Why do you need two rails if you're not going to put more product on it? I just don't get it.
Spent ten years in the railroad industry, Frank, I absolutely know what you're talking about and where you're coming from, but, like I said, it's just, it's very early on, very preliminary, it's basically written in pencil, there's nothing out there.
But in pen, ours says no.
We just have, we just have to make those conversations and put them together, so, just letting you know. That's my mayor's report, alright, thanks.
Alright. Thank you.
Yeah. Citizens' comments, any citizens' comments, I don't know, it's on the bench. Eric?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Mayor? If I can, could you indulge me for a few moments? I'm here with Ryan Boswell, Triple V Enterprises, I wanted to express a little bit of frustration, I can say a little bit, some frustration, and ask for your help, ask for Tony's help as well. This is regarding the building at Safe 60 North Kankakee, and I think all of you probably recall, last year, came to the city council, we worked through the zoning issues, we worked out redevelopment agreement, everything was great, we closed on the property in summer, and I think if you go by the property, you'll see Ryan's done a heck of a job cleaning up the area, trying to make it, trying to spruce it up, make it look good, trying to be a good neighbor. In October, went in, got our permits, submitted our permits for the applications, Ryan submitted a fire alarm plan, if you remember, the part of the redevelopment, even though this was currently storage, because of the zoning change, what we did is we installed or we designed a fire alarm system and provided that, as well as the building blueprints in terms of any other changes that were going to be done, submitted those, application was approved, installed to the cost of tens of thousands of dollars, had the fire alarm system installed, and the beginning of December, we came in with the fire department and the building inspector, we did the walkthrough inspection, everything looked good, we had, we still needed to do the final alarm test, the fire alarm contractor was not able to be there that day, and they need to pull the fire alarm, apparently. Wasn't aware of that, but the next day, that's when, I guess the bottom fell out, go back to a better term. Even though the plans were reviewed, and actually Chuck, the building inspector, had conversations with the alarm design firm, he informed me that, you know, I'm getting a look at these plans here, and your fire alarm designer is from Texas, it's not an Illinois licensed designer. Okay, what does that mean? The alarm's up, the arm... And to this day, for the past couple of months, the fire department has been monitoring it, so it's working, it's being monitored by the fire department as we speak, but it's not signed off by an Illinois licensed designer. Okay, so we go round and round with Chuck, we figure, what's the solution, what do we need to do here? He suggests have an Illinois designer sign off on the plans. Okay, so we pay to have another Illinois licensed designer, takes the same plans, draws them up, puts his name on them, we're good, submit those back to Chuck, and we wait, and we wait, and I've sent several emails to him, asking what's the status, I believe we're in a situation here where, I don't know what kind of planner you... His comment was, "I need to review the plans." Okay, given that you've already seen these, you issued a permit for these, and the only thing we've ever changed is the name on the bottom. There was a resubmital of the building design, separate from the fire alarm system, the building designs, he wanted to see where the new electrical boxes were, we provided that as well. Those came at the end of the year, and actually on New Year's Eve, got them over to him, and we've asked him now, a couple of occasions, where are we at, what's the status, what's going on, we're... Mine's losing thousands of dollars here for this business, and we were told on the 12th I asked, and Chuck responded that he would have the plans reviewed, he'd have the plans back to us tomorrow, maybe the 13th, in general. Didn't hear anything. On the 14th, I asked, sent him another email, and I go, John knows lawyers, I mean, we can be mean and rough, and very good, very good, sent him an email, just said, "Hey, can we get this thing put to bed, what's the status, what's the update?" At that point, I got chastised by Chuck, who indicated that I was being impatient, and based on the resubmital, he didn't know why, why he was being impatient, but said he would get the plans, he'd have his review finished on the 19th, yesterday. Nothing on the 19th, nothing today, so again, we're frustrated with the process, and I understand, I know Chuck represents many communities, and I know he can get busy, but the concern here is, I'm very concerned, and Ryan's very concerned, because we don't know what he's going to come back, because he's kind of, his comment was, "I'll have the plan reviewed and any redesign that needs to be done, or any changes that need to be made, so you can take them to your designer." The system is up, the system was put in, was installed based upon the permit that was issued, and it seems to me now that now we're just looking at the, at the plans, or we're just getting back to us with comments, so obviously I'm concerned about that, and concerned with the business that Ryan's losing, and I was concerned, wanted to make you aware of it as well, as what Tony, I think that it's a situation where, I know Tony's been included on some of the emails, but I wanted to bring this to everybody's attention as well as Tony's, because I don't know, is this the process, this being gone done with, you got a lot, you got bridge development, you got a lot of big, big industrial, this is just simply, Ryan, he's a vocal guy trying to do the right thing, do some of this building, but what happens when you got multi-million dollar corporations and they're getting, well that's a better word, the runner, so, I bring this up, I do have a bit of a hand up, Ryan had put together a write-up, kind of giving some more details in terms of the dates and things that I can hand out to everybody, but, again, it's frustrating because the alarm system is up and running, it's being monitored, it was built based on a permit provision, and we're waiting, and waiting, and waiting, and I get confused and a little disappointed, I thank you for your attention.
We'll do it at the same time, as we'll... I need to get with Chuck, find out what's going on on his end, yeah, just from what I've heard from you guys, it's unacceptable, but I got to find out. Just a quick question, is there any big issues with the alarm company? Who's the alarm company? The monitoring company is monitoring this? Is WestCom? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you?
Yeah.
Anything else you want to add, Ryan? I'm sorry.
Yeah, and there's, that's a pretty rough, rough outline what you have in your hand, I mean, there's a lot of key points that were disappointing, when Chuck actually showed up at the inspection, excuse me, he had actually showed up and asked Eric if we even had a building permit at the final inspection.
The alarm's up, everything's in the... Fire department's fine, he's checking everything, making sure where things are in the plan, and when Chuck goes, "Do you even have a permit?" "Yes, you issued the permit, how could we double work otherwise?"
Well, I wish it would have been, uh, that policy.
We were hoping it would just take care of itself.
Yeah, sure.
Hey, Mayor, can you refresh us what's going on? Chuck, who is this?
Chuck Castle, Castle Engineering, he's our building inspector, contract, our building inspector, handles all our building stuff, building permits, all that stuff. He just recently took over for the other company that we were having issues with. Yep. Yeah, we initially were, we were initially working with that guy, and I think we sent him a couple of questions, and that guy, two or three months, get back to us, and then we heard he was replaced, and we're like, "Oh, hallelujah." Here you go. We're trying to open the building since September, uh, Stephen. Here, I'd like to take a slide, apologize first for the length of delay, but I'll find out what's going on.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Can you ask Chuck to come in and explain it to everyone?
Uh, we'll, we'll give you the report. Let's find out both sides of it, I have the copy of the emails, I know there's been some struggles on both sides, and we need to find out Chuck's, find out what's going on, maybe Chuck will have to come to the committee and give a little bit of an outline of how he does this process. That would be a good idea from coming to the committee.
But, I mean, the biggest thing I want right now is find a resolution.
Set up a building. About this in September, he's still...
I'm not going to immediately point fingers on a resolution first, so...
But we need to work toward a quick resolution.
Yeah, we will. Okay, Chuck, at the building grounds?
Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments?
Sure.
Eric, do you have anything?
Oh, I just wanted to thank you guys for all the work that you're doing, you take care of the city, and you take care of the citizens, and I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Go Sox.
I was black eyed, right, I mean, very complicated. Alright. Alright, finding the zoning permission, their next scheduled meeting is Thursday, February 5th, 2015, 6:00 PM. Committee reports, building grounds, health parks, safety, Alderman Van Dyne, Alderman Persick. I'm going to pass on the first one. Yeah, I believe the proposal submitted by Breeze Eric is going to be tabled or passed on.
Just go back.
Going back to the committee level for right now, and also, which will be our next scheduled meeting, Wednesday, February 11th, 2015, at 6:30 PM. Wyver Street sewers and alleys, Alderman Tudor, Alderman Kerwin.
Next scheduled meeting Wednesday, February 11th, 2015, at 5:00 PM.
Police and Ed, Alderman Stuter, Alderman Tudor.
I move to approve the call submitted by Sunbelt Rentals in an amount not to exceed $15,911 for portable light towers for the loan to ESDA.
I'm lodged by Alderman Tudor, we have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Stuter, any discussion? Portable light towers for...
ESDA.
And then there'll be some of the public works.
Yeah, and we did, I did submit for, um, to Exilem there.
Yeah, so we may get some grant dollars, Exilem has those community grants, I think $10,000, I think.
It could be up to much as $10,000, this one might qualify as $10,000, they're only here five, he's going to try and get it, so...
Just for yearly projects, or is it... Emergency. For, oh, it's a purchase? Yes, it's a purchase, it's not a rental, he says some of them are actually for purchase. Sorry. You're alright, good question. Any other discussion? Call both, please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent, motion passes.
Next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, February 10th, at 5:30 PM.
My next administration in Lenac, Alderman Stuter, Alderman Tudor.
I move to approve the accounts payable report dated January 20th, 2015, in the amount of $312,875.22, and the December 31st, 2014 collector's report, in the amount of $332,485.21.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Evans, any discussion? Call both, please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent, motion passes.
Next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, February 17th, at 6:00 PM.
Orders to License Committee, Alderman Hall, Alderman Evans.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, February 10th, July 15th, 6:00 PM.
First time collective bargaining, Alderman Persick. Assistant, best of best report, Mr. Graff.
Joey, you sent all the emails under the new transparency, and it's all set up, so your emails are on, your city emails are on now on the website, I think they are.
Yes, sir.
Wanted to send there, and when I did, when I did talk to IDOT in regards to, you know, our projects that are pending, along with our OSLID grants, we are still on hold, and everything's under review for any dollars worth we're asking for, so OSLID right now is, we can still move forward, they can tell us that, you know, if we can go ahead and spend money, let the KENAC give us any guarantee, so, I talked to Openlands today, and told them we would not be looking at any, anything until we get some direction from the state now, funds will be available, because they wanted us to go up and get the appraisals done, or they were going to do the appraisals to get ready for it, so we're on delay. The, you guys agreed on an agreement for the Eliana corridor study, we did sign that agreement, and the state did sign that before November 1st, however, they advised us that if we haven't spent any funds, we have spent a few thousand dollars, setting up the process and all the meetings, working with the planners, the senators gave suggestion not to continue, he said, "I can't guarantee you for sure that those dollars will be there, whatever you expended, you know, we'll definitely reimburse you for that, but if you want to put it on hold, no problem, we'll put it on hold for now," so, that grant will be on hold until we get further direction from the governor's office and IDOT, so, we'll see where things go. Did have further discussion, I know there's been dialogue in regards to the dam, the surveys, the wetland surveys that they did do back in late November, there are December, still about 30 more days before those get reviewed by the IDN, and once they are done, then we'll get some, some direction in regards to the impact of modifying the dam or removal of the dam, how it impacts the flood area and the wetland areas, and in talking to the Corps, we needed that study done, no matter what we're doing, if we're going to be applying for modification of the dam, which is what we're still, we're doing. Chief, RLI did, had an opportunity to meet with the Lieutenant Governor the other day, and we invited her to come down to Wobbiton, on the dam issue, and under the Lieutenant Governor's role, they are in charge of the rivers, the Illinois Claimed Rivers Act, so, she said, "We're going to be quite busy the next, you know, maybe two months," but she told the scheduler to get something scheduled for her to come down and, you know, hear about the public safety issue with our dam and everything like that, so, we set the scene with the new administration, and we're going to know, so I think that's good, we'll see where that comes back. That's sort of the updates right now, I do know that we had another truck that stuck under the BIDOC today. I do know that we had another truck that stuck under the I-DOT today. Right, Chief?
Yes.
And that was something coming southbound?
Yes.
Really?
The Asian eight cars? Yes. Man, many, many words.
Yeah, yeah. It was right there on Chicago going under by the fitness center, right?
They got to the south side of the dock, but they didn't get the whole truck.
Yeah. On that curve.
Yeah. And it hit the last thing when I wanted it.
A semi? Semi.
It was a little box truck.
But there aren't a lot in there either.
No. Ching, ching.
But nobody's hurt, though?
No, it was hurt. A little shook up.
No damage?
No. Emotionally, psychologically? I don't think the engineer has anything to do.
Attorney's report, Mr. Herman.
Thank you. Since the last city council meeting, I finalized the complaints for injunction and demolition that I advised the committee members at, one of the committees on Wednesday. And one of the first steps, say up here filing a complaint, is service a summons on the defendants. We've already got service on one of the defendants. They were working on service on the other defendant. Once they're served, you have 30 days to file an answer otherwise up here. And that's what we're at.
We're talking about the gas station, right?
That's all I have. The gas station, the angry property. That's all I have. I just wanted, we have the committee session?
No, we don't.
I was gonna ask you the same thing. It sounds like you just put the capash on it.
I didn't forget one thing under the mayor's report that I wanted to bring up because it's been in the news, is the temporary closing of Walter Strong Drive in Elwood and the impact that it can have on our community.
Yeah.
And you think about it, right off the bat, it has a positive impact on the city as far as the amount of truck traffic that continually travels through our town every day. But there are also concerns and concerns that have been from businesses within town that have been conveyed to me and a lot of it's our businesses out on South Arsenal Road, businesses within Kankakee River Drive. They have some genuine concerns in how it can really have a negative impact on their business because of the usage of that thing. I'll tell you what I learned a lot just in the past week and how things really operate. A lot of the, you know, you gotta remember, they're dealing with big trucks. They're dealing with big things. They're small business people. You know, a lot of transport, one's a family-run business, then a family-run business, forever. So they're still small business even though they deal with big items. They're really having some challenges with this potential happening. And the challenges come in not so much as, yeah, it could add mileage to them going. But there's also restrictions on county roads. There's restrictions on river road. There's actually restrictions on Arsenal Road that I always wondered why all the overweight's kinda used our state highway. Now you know, is because county does not allow overweights unless they're ag products. So that's a huge challenge. And some of our business people have said, "We don't know how long we could operate if this becomes permanent." And that's scary for us from an economic standpoint. And also, that viability of prologis and the industrial park there also comes into question too because what, you know, this is something that was being utilized from day one. So as much as, you know, hey, I'm there, everybody's saying we could eliminate a lot of the trucks in our town, great. But at the same time, it impacts us, could have a huge impact to us, honestly, economically. One of the things I plan on doing is I plan on reaching out to our county commissioners as well as the county chairman and express to them our concerns that our business people are having in regards to their limited availability and usage of county roads for movement of freight, you know, just basically the movement of commerce. And hope that they will really look into the fees that they charge. They're really high fees and that they, you know, will kinda lessen the restrictions that they currently have. Hopefully, they'll do that. I don't know. I haven't had the opportunity to converse with them. But I just wanted to let people know that there's, you know, as much as it could have a positive impact on the reproduction, the amount of truck traffic that actually travels through town, it could have the same negative impact on the business, some of the lot of businesses that we have in town at the same time as far as our future economic growth. So gotta keep a close eye on it. They say it's temporary. I'm sure there's lots of wheeling and deal or stuff going on. There's lots of discussion. I won't put it that way. I can say wheeling. There's lots of discussion. But, yeah, I don't disagree that they need to use I-55 for, but when you find out why they can't really kinda enlighten us to why they've been doing this. So I'll put that out. So I just wanted to let everybody know that as well. Sorry, I forgot that beginning of the thing. So excited about Frank.
We're talking about the trains.
Oh, all right. So seeing how we have no executive session, I need a motion for adjournment. Second. I moved adjourned to January 20th, 2015.
What if we start doing-
At 7:35.